All right.
Good.
All right. Welcome, everyone, to the Wednesday, November 10th regular meeting of Little Compton School Committee. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. I would like to have a moment of silence for Mr. Allen Scherz from the Portsmouth Portsmouth School Committee who passed away last week. Thank you. I think Peter and Hannah and I all had the pleasure of being on the committee with him at some point. It was a shock to me. So. And moving on to consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Do you have a motion? Second.
Session. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes. I would like to move Dr. Elizabeth Lang, MD, President of the Rhode Island Medical Society and past President of the Rhode Island Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, up to now, up to our current location. If no one has any objections to that?
No.
No? Okay. Would like to welcome Dr. Lang. Hi, welcome. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Hi, thank you very much for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with your school committee a little bit further. As already introduced, my name is Beth Lang and I'm a pediatrician at Waterman Pediatrics Coastal Medical Lifespan. I know you've already had a few presentations related to COVID from the district's medical experts. I've been invited today to help answer any further questions that may remain as well as speak about the new authorization for the COVID vaccine for children ages five to 11 years old. Certainly, this Zoom format is less conducive to the kind of personal dialogue that I find most effective to answer questions. So I've decided to frame this presentation with some questions that I hear from my parents in the office. If you still have more questions this evening, please feel free to reach out to your pediatrician or family physician to talk about these questions. Statewide, Rhode Island has 92% of all of our adults 18 years older who are at least partially vaccinated against COVID-19 and 84% adults who are fully vaccinated, meaning they've had two doses or one dose of the appropriate vaccine. For children, the statewide numbers are less rosy with 64% of Rhode Island children ages 15 to 18 who are fully vaccinated and 37% of children ages 12 to 14. The Department of Health data site post data also town by town. So before this evening, I had a chance to look at the Little Compton data. While Little Compton is very lucky to have fewer citizens infected with COVID-19 than any other town in the state, there are also fewer adults who are vaccinated against COVID-19. Only 57% of Little Compton's adults, according to the Department Health website, are fully vaccinated and 63% are partially vaccinated, both numbers that are quite below the statewide number. Studies show that children vaccine rates often follow the parents' vaccine rates. So it feels like this is a good time to continue the conversation about the important role that vaccination is playing in protecting all of us against serious infections from COVID-19 and in ending this pandemic, which has disrupted so much. Pfizer's vaccine against COVID-19 was FDA and CDC approved for teenagers ages 16 to 18 almost a year ago in December of 2020. As we all know, it was approved for children ages 12 to 15 last May and the five to 11-year-olds just received their approval right before Halloween. Each of these approvals came after rigorous scientific testing and monitoring and monitoring that is still ongoing. In the U.S. alone, over 432 million doses of COVID prevention vaccines have been given. Worldwide, that number is over 7 billion doses have been delivered to patients to save their lives. The scientific literature continues to build and continues to support the safety of these vaccines. So let's talk about the vaccine for children age five to 11. This is the same Pfizer vaccine that people age 12 and older are getting, but it is one-third of the dose. Studies show that giving 10 micrograms instead of 30 micrograms to this age group gave the same antibody levels and disease protection, but with less side effects. The vaccine was found to be 90.7% effective against symptomatic COVID-19 in children ages five to 11 and no significant safety issues were identified. Children, like adults, may experience some discomfort after vaccination such as fatigue, sore arm at the shot site, headache, or maybe even a little bit of fever. One of the points I hear from vaccine hesitant parents is that the vaccine doesn't work because vaccinated people keep getting infected. So why should I get it? To be clear, the vaccine does not prevent all infection, but it does prevent against serious even life-threatening infections. In many states, over 90% of the patients hospitalized with COVID infections right now are unvaccinated. In Rhode Island, hospitalization rates for unvaccinated teens has been 10 times higher than among fully vaccinated adults. Looking at the school data, since the start of school this year, 92% of the students in pre-K through 12 schools who tested positive for COVID-19 were not vaccinated. Another question I hear is why should we vaccinate kids if kids don't seem to be getting as sick as adults? It is true that many children with COVID-19 can have a mild illness. And in the beginning of this pandemic over a year ago, we focused on the grandmas and the great grandmas who were getting sick. But as the older folk in our community are getting vaccinated, this virus is still looking for people to infect. And the age of the people who are getting sick from COVID-19 infections is coming down. Then this summer, the Delta variant hit and the more contagious variant of the Delta variant made more people sick. So this is a new pandemic since when we started a year and a half ago. Since the pandemic started, over 2 million children ages five to 11 have been infected nationwide. 8,300 of these children have been hospitalized with almost three quarters of these children having to be admitted to the intensive care unit. They were that sick. One-third of these children that were admitted were completely healthy. They had no pre-existing conditions. Of the 8,300 children that have been hospitalized, 2,300 of these children had MISC. That's the multi-system inflammatory syndrome, which is a serious complication from COVID-19 infections. And as we know from following the national news, MISC is most common in the five to 11-year-old age group and can be life-threatening. And in fact, nationwide, 94 children age five to 11 have passed away with their COVID-19 infection. COVID-19 has now become one of the top 10 causes of pediatric death. There are also studies that show that 7% to 8% of COVID-infected children go on to develop long-hauler symptoms syndrome, having symptoms that continue longer than three months after their initial infection. So that's the national news. Why are we talking nationally when we should be talking about Rhode Island? Looking at the national database with the Rhode Island data in it, as of last week, 28,840 Rhode Island children across all ages have been infected with COVID-19 in the last 20 months. That is 17% of our statewide infections have been in children. 308 children have been infected and many of these children have had to be in the ICU. So our state is has similar numbers, similar percentages as the national data. So pediatricians are recommending that all children become vaccinated against COVID-19 to protect them against serious infection and long-hauler syndrome. We also recommend that all children become vaccinated against COVID-19 because it's the best way to return to a normal childhood. Once enough children are vaccinated, the need for masks will become less. Until the science says it's time, it is still important for our children to wear masks in school and for all of us to wear masks indoors, especially in crowded places. Rhode Island is still a high transmissibility state according to CDC guidelines, which means that we still have a high number of infection cases per 100,000 citizens. But once vaccinated, children are able to play their sports without worry, go to sleepovers, visit relatives and loved ones. And as one girl said in the paper recently, she wanted to have a pillow fight with her best friend. With the holidays coming up, anyone who is infected with COVID-19 needs to isolate and who wants to miss the holidays? Also, we're talking about vaccinating children ages five through 18. We still don't have a vaccine approved yet for the children less than that age group. So for our holiday gatherings, it's important for all of us who are eligible vaccinated to receive our vaccine so we can protect the babies that are in our family. Another cool thing about being vaccinated is that when there is a COVID exposure in a classroom, vaccinated children do not need to quarantine. That means there's less learning loss, less family disruption when the quarantine child has to stay home. The CDC guidance provides that that in-person learning is very important for students. And we all know, thanks to all the work that the parents in this district have done in the last year, remote learning is hard. Everybody did their best job, but in-person learning is the best and least disruptive. Vaccinating our children ages five through 11 and 11 through 18 is the best way to minimize learning disruption this year. Rhode Island schools have a strong layered protection approach through universal indoor masking, screening and testing programs, distancing, ventilation and vaccination. Just like last year, schools are one of the safest places for children to be considering COVID-19 spread. As I said, the vaccine dose for children ages five to 11 is 10 micrograms. For children 12 and older, it's 30 micrograms. So what happens if an 11-year-old who's close to their birthday? What do they do? Do they get their vaccine now and have their birthday and then get their second dose in three weeks? What is the correct dose? The CDC is very clear that it's important to vaccinate children now and not wait until that fourth birthday. Because every day that a child is not vaccinated is another day that they're at risk for being sick from COVID-19. So the recommendations are that that 11-year-old child close to their birthday get the 10-microgram dose, the small dose, and once they turn 12, get the elevated dose, which is appropriate for that age. Vaccines, in this case, are related to age and not size or weight. Earlier this year, there were a few reports of myocarditis in older teenagers as a side effect of the COVID vaccine. Myocarditis, or inflammation of the heart, can occur after any viral infection. In fact, the risk of getting myocarditis from natural COVID infection is 10 times the risk of getting myocarditis from the vaccine. The FDA and CDC looked closely for the side effect in the five to 11-year-old studies, but no participants in the large vaccine trial developed myocarditis. Another question I've heard in the office is, I have natural immunity from a recent COVID infection, so why do I need to be vaccinated? Research has shown that while natural immunity has some duration, the length and strength of that is not clear. It may not be enough to protect against a repeat infection and the repeat infection may be from a different strain of the COVID virus than the one that first made you sick. In one study of hospitalized patients, it found that natural immunity patients were five times more likely to have a positive COVID test than people who are infected. How soon after an infection can someone get vaccinated? The recommendation is that everyone, children included, can be vaccinated as soon as they complete their isolation period from their infection and are no longer experiencing symptoms. People who have been exposed to COVID-19 should wait until they've completed their quarantine period of 14 days before getting their vaccine. Vaccine trials are underway for children ages six months to five years old, but the thinking right now is the vaccine information and availability won't be until the beginning of 2020. So 2022, pardon me. So it behooves all of us to get vaccinated now, all of us who are eligible. So in summary, the benefits of COVID-19 vaccine for all schoolchildren ages five to 18 far outweigh the risks. Frankly, this statement is true for all ages. COVID-19 vaccine saves significant illness, saves lives and helps us to return to the normalcy we also desperately crave. We know that this vaccine works and will help us to end the pandemic. We want all of Rhode Island children to get vaccinated so they can stay healthy, be ready to learn and have fun with their sports and other extracurricular activities. If you still have more questions after this presentation, your questions are important and they deserve a personal discussion. Please feel free to reach out to your pediatrician or your family physician. If you're interested in getting your child vaccinated or yourself vaccinated even, there is a clinic coming up this Friday from four to seven at the Wilbur McMahon School. And if that's not a convenient time or place, I recommend calling your pediatrician as many of us are vaccinating our patients in our offices. You can also find a clinic on vaccinateri.org and searching for Pfizer COVID-19 pediatric vaccine. Or you can make an appointment at a local pharmacy like CVS, Walgreens or Stop &amp; Shop. If you'd rather the personal touch, the Department Health has set up a phone number of calling 844-930-1779 or you can dial 211 to get personalized attention and help in making an appointment for your vaccine. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with all of you this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Lang. That was very informative. We appreciate it. Does anyone on the committee have any questions for the doctor?
I'd like to see if the parents can have the opportunity to ask questions.
If she has time. Laurie, do you have any questions for the doctor? No, it's no. Okay. Dr. Lang, do you mind answering a few questions from our participants this evening? Is that okay?
I would be honored to. I really value these questions and love to learn with families together. Thank you.
Okay. So because there's a lot of participants, I'd like everyone to come up with their best questions and we'll do one question per person unless there's not a lot of questions and we can go around. But I want to give everyone a chance to ask a question without keeping the doctor here all night.
Start here?
Sure.
One hand up, somebody named Jean, if you want to unmute yourself and state your full name and address.
No, hi. This is Jean Dunn. I'm the school nurse here at Wilbur McMahon. And I believe I heard you just say that those that are close contacts should wait a period of 14 days of quarantine before getting the COVID vaccine. I also have heard over the last couple of days reported 10 days, wait 10 days, and I've also heard reported to wait seven days. So I was just curious to know what your, I know you just said 14, but there seems to be.
Thank you. I appreciate the question and you're right, there have been a lot of different answers over time. And that's one of the things with this pandemic is things have been evolving. I think the CDC's recommendation, as I read it most recently, was 14 days because that allowed the person who had been exposed to COVID-19 infection to run through their potential contagious and infectious period and making sure that they don't get sick themselves first from their exposure before giving the vaccine. But certainly, this is information that is changing and happy again that if a family has a question about this, they can talk to their physician or healthcare provider to decide what is best for that family in that circumstance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
My name is Matt Nicole, 40 Old Main Road. Twice you mentioned that the FDA and CDC looked very closely during their experiment in five to 11-year-olds. I'm curious in the data collected in the experiment for five to 11-year-olds without including immunobridge data, how many serious cases and deaths existed in the control and the experiment groups?
I have not studied that data to that level to be able to rattle it off the top of my head to you right now. But I do know and respect all the people who are on the FDA and CDC committees who review the data, many of whom are pediatricians who are leaders in infectious diseases. And I know that having seen the American Academy of Pediatrics presentations that they have given coming out of those meetings, that they felt like the data was compelling, scientifically rigorous and statistically significant enough to say that this vaccine has great value in protecting children's lives from serious COVID infections.
Can I? Can I? So there are zero in both. Immunobridging was necessary because there was no impact, because there were zero sick people, sick children or dead children in either the treatment or the control. I'm curious what the, what you would believe a good immunobridge analysis would look like. What are the criteria for an immunobridge analysis to be scientifically valid?
I appreciate your question, sir. That is above and beyond, I think, the scope of what we're talking about right now. I can certainly have a private conversation with you outside of here, but that is, I think, not, not data I can rattle off with you right now or honestly would have impact in whether this vaccine for, was approved or not because it was approved by people who thought that the statistical and scientific rigor were met in the studies that were performed. And certainly, there's ongoing surveillance. This is not a one-and-done study that as each of these vaccine doses are being given to all ages across all vaccines, the CDC is continuing to look at potential side effects, which is why I think the robust data of the fact that millions and millions of doses of this vaccine have been given across all ages around the country is very reassuring that these vaccines are safe.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Got a hand?
The audience here. Megan Boudreaux, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Megan Gonzalez, 19 South Shore Road. Thank you, Dr. Lang. That was great information. I was wondering if you, if a child was going to have a serious reaction to this vaccine or any vaccine, what is the time period that that would normally occur?
Thank you. I think that, as you nicely said, there are lots of pediatric vaccines and each one of them could have a different timeframe for reaction. So if you don't mind, I'll be broad and say that each one of them, at a minimum, it is a 30-day window that the CDC evaluates through its VAERS system. This is a nationalized system that if there is a concern that there's been a reaction to a vaccine, the pediatrician or family physician reports it to the nationwide database and let the scientists at the CDC evaluate whether this is a scientifically significant reaction to a vaccine. The COVID-19 vaccines have a similar reporting system. And so I don't, I honestly don't know if the 90 days is still being applied, but I know that is the standard for other vaccines.
Thank you.
One more virtual hand. Andrew Ryan. Is unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Yes, Andrew Ryan, 40 Paget Brook Road. Thank you so much, Dr. Lang, and thank you to the school committee for bringing an expert in to talk to people and give some factual information out. I just had a question. I, I was curious if you knew the ramifications of, say, a five-year-old child getting sick and maybe not having any symptoms at all and, and doing great through an infection, but then giving that disease to maybe an immunocompromised family member or an older adult in the community? How would that? I think it would be helpful for people to understand who are maybe thinking that possibly young people aren't affected by this. So there's really no reason to vaccinate them. I think maybe they're confused that this is more than just personal health, but also public health. And I think if you could speak to the effectiveness of, of reducing transmission down below an R of one and how that would help in the pandemic, it might help people understand the need to vaccinate their children. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your question. In fact, all vaccinations that we give have a societal benefit. We vaccinate against pertussis or whooping cough. We vaccinate against measles. And in fact, schoolchildren are required to have all these vaccines in order to enter school because we not only want to protect the individual, but we want to protect the society. Vaccinations are about the me and the we because we have an obligation to protect everybody. So in this particular instance, your example that you gave, Mr. Ryan, is exactly it, that if anybody is asymptomatic infected, it's wonderful, lucky for them that they're not very symptomatic at all or hardly even know they're infected. But it is where is that infection spreading and to whom? We don't know who has a compromised immune system in this, in our society. We don't know who had vaccines but didn't get a robust uptake from it. And so you're absolutely right in that the vaccination program for COVID-19, similar to all the other pediatric vaccines that we give, are to protect not only the child, but also society from having an outbreak or surge of a particular illness. In this case, in this instance, we're talking about COVID-19. But your, your point is taken across all the, most of the infectious diseases that are societally spread.
Thank you. Let me just make sure no one else has any questions. Any more hands? No? Anyone?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm gonna, I gotta ask because I'm sure there's a lot of parents are wondering. I'm one of them, is that a lot of the vaccines that you're referring to in the age groups 12 and up, basically are all then, obviously, kids that are older, teens, adults and what have you. What they have now approved for five to 11-year-olds where these children are not as developed as the older kids or teenagers are. And there has not been a long enough study or history been done with, with these, this age group. How do you go and reassure parents that a kid at this, at this age that they're going to be all right and that there's not going to be any long-term side effects? I find that very hard to be able to do that. So. And I guess that's a sticking point for myself, knowing that a child's so young that we don't really know what this is going to do to them. I understand you're saying it's a lower dose, but how can you reassure parents that nothing's going to happen to their five-year-old or six-year-old long-term compared to a child that may be older, you know, 12, 14, 18, you know, 20? How do you? How do you handle that?
I appreciate your question. It's a very insightful one. Honestly, if you don't mind, I'm going to take age out of it. How can I reassure anybody that this vaccine is safe in the long term? For the, and I'll answer that question to say, life is about balancing risks and benefits. And for each one of us and each one of our families, our balance may be a little bit different. I cannot guarantee that the car seat that your child drives, rides in is going to protect them in a car accident. We all hope our seatbelts work on the drive home. We all hope the meat we buy at the market doesn't give us food poisoning. There are unfortunately, no 100% guarantees in life. And I, I don't say that to be sassy and I, but I say that to say that we all make decisions in our lives every single day based on the risks and the benefits of something. And some of us are going to come out with different conclusions at the end of our own personal assessment. For me, as a scientist, looking at the scientific data of what COVID-19 infections can do to children and people in general, this is a really significant infection. And we don't know what the long-term complications of this are going to be. We go back to the 50s with polio. That turned out to be, people could have late complications of polio decades later. Is COVID-19 going to be one of those viruses too? Nobody knows. But we do know that right now, it's a very serious infection for many people. It is causing long-haul COVID symptoms in some people with brain fog in the older folks, older adults. And so the risk benefit is I have a treatment in front of me that has been well researched. It feels like a short time to many people when actually the virus has only been here a short time. But the mRNA technology that is used in this vaccine has been studied for over 10 years. They have, the scientists have been using this technology to try and make other vaccines for HIV and Ebola. And those viruses just weren't amenable to this platform, but the coronavirus was. And that's why this vaccine came to be so quickly. So each family needs to balance the risks and benefits for themselves. Look at the science, look at the rigor of the science, look at what happens with a natural infection and the consequences of that because we know what that is. And then have people decide what is the best and safest decision for them. And to the gentleman's question before, to society. If we don't like wearing masks, if we want to have life back to normal, we need to do something to change that calculus. And the way we do that is we stop the virus of COVID-19 from running through our communities. And right now, vaccination is our best way to do that. The masks and everything else are the big help, but it doesn't stop it from running through the community. And the more people who are infected with COVID-19, the more time it has to get more people infected, the more opportunity it has to make more variants. Remember, a variant is just a typo. And every time the virus infects somebody else, there's a risk if there's a typo in that infection. And so we know what the variants are now and the vaccines we have now work for the variants we have now. But if we're not able to slow down the rate of transfer of this vaccine and the rate of people getting infected, the risk of more typos or more variants coming forth is real. And again, I don't say that to be provocative, but to just state a fact. So I think each family needs to decide, sir, take the data with, as it makes sense to you. Keep having scientific discussions and decide what is ultimately best for your family. I would hope that families would feel comfortable vaccinating their children. But if a family member's not quite there yet, then please keep having these discussions. It's better to talk about things than to just turn around and say, no, not for me. Because in not making a decision, that is a decision. Because in not making a decision, that is a decision, and we know what a COVID-19 infection can do.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all this information. I'd like to ask a question that I've heard very frequently when having this discussion with community members about vaccination. Is there any risk at all specifically for females, but also for males, of infertility after receiving the COVID-19 vaccination?
Wonderful question. Thank you so much for bringing it up. It's a question that, or something that started towards the beginning of the vaccination time in this pandemic, that there could be a risk of these vaccines affecting both genders fertility. That is not scientifically proven out as a statement. The fertility rate worldwide has continued without any consequences to children born, to women who receive their COVID vaccination. And so that, the thinking right now, and there's more data about this on the CDC website for people who'd like to delve into it more, specifically as one of their FAQs, because it is something that has been talked about a lot. The vaccine does not affect fertility.
Thank you.
Virtual audience here. Maureen R., you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Hi, Maureen Rico, 16K Mullen Hill Road. Dr. Lang, is there room in the conversation for scientists, top-notch doctors, that speak to us with different statistics, with different science? Is there room in discussion for that? Or are we to follow the CDC guidelines or science? Because I hear, you know, science is real and follow the science. But there are, there are differing opinions from top doctors throughout the world. And they're not on board with, specifically with vaccinating children as young as five to 11. So I'm curious what your thoughts are on that, please.
I think there's always room, in any room, for an honest, calm, scientific discussion. You're right, there's an awful lot of data. But I think it should be, all discussions should be rooted in true scientific data and not hearsay and not anecdotal data. So I can't speak specifically to your question. I agree that worldwide, there have been lots and lots of discussions. And I can't speak specifically to whether children should be vaccinated or not. I know of what you speak, but I think the overarching theme is that the majority of scientists worldwide recommend vaccination as the best way to protect everyone against this pandemic. Clearly, this is an important thing for you and for your family and your decision-making. So I would say have a conversation with your physician more one-on-one, where, you know, speaking specifically about the things that you've learned, about what your physician has learned. Talk to the people at the Department of Health, if you'd like to do that. I'm sure that is a conversation that can be arranged to just understand what specifically you're learning and what your specific concerns are. But the overarching theme is what my read of the scientific literature and the journals, Journal of American Medical Association and other international journals, is that vaccination is our best way to keep everybody as healthy as possible.
Yeah.
Christine Olivera, once I find the button, there we go. You should be able to unmute. Please state your name and address.
Yes, hi, Christine Olivera, 39 Long Highway. Thank you, doctor. I'm sorry, I came in a little late, unfortunately, to this meeting. So I'll have to go back and watch the replay to get the beginning of what you said. So I agree with what you're saying as far as the data. You know, it's very important for parents to outweigh the risks and the benefits because this is something that cannot be undone. I personally know some people who their children have unfortunately had injuries from this already. And I just want to make sure that everybody is doing what you're saying, for them to do their own research, get all the information and the data to make sure they're making the best decision for themselves and their family. With that being said, I, being a parent, was doing my own research and data. And one thing that I'm just trying to wrap my head around, and maybe you can help me with this, is, you know, it's been said, whoever gets vaccinated, whether it be child or adult, they still can spread it. So the children are lowest on the totem pole as far as being affected. You know, we know the statistics, the death rates, you know, this isn't really affecting children. And I know a lot of people right now, you know, do your part, get your children vaccinated to protect immunocompromised, the elderly, you know, family members, so on and so on. If that is the case, and whether you're vaccinated or not, you can still spread COVID and not knowing, because this is so new with giving it to children, the side effects, the potential dangers it can cause to them, which are irreversible if that does happen. How will parents take those two things in way, get them vaccinated, even though they still can spread it? And they may be one of the children that unfortunately has one of those serious side effects or not? Can you help if people are kind of trying to balance those two issues?
Sure. I mean, ultimately, I can't tell somebody else how to balance for their family. I would like to pick up on your issue that children don't really get sick and aren't affected by this pandemic. I disagree with that. Children do get sick, and some of them get significantly sick. To put it in context, we vaccinate children pretty readily against influenza. We all get an influenza vaccine every single year. In a traditional flu year, about 100 children die nationwide within, because of their influenza infection, about 30,000 to 35,000 adults die every single year from influenza. COVID-19 is very differently. To date, over the last 20 months, over 800 children have died nationwide from COVID. And I think to the parents of those 800 children, this is tragic. This is tragic, just like it is to the families of the 720,000 people who passed away nationwide. So this is something that's pretty big, and it's not, we can't guarantee that a child's going to have a mild infection or not. So for some families, they may choose to not vaccinate their child yet because they're not concerned about that data and they're pretty sure their child, if getting sick is going to have a mild infection, and they have a healthy family, that may be a decision they make for their family. As a pediatrician to see sick children, I don't want to see any child unnecessarily get sick. But I also respect that families in this particular illness want to think about it and talk about it. So I would ask that families continue to have, I'm going to come back to it again, those personal conversations with their pediatrician or family physician. I spent 25 minutes on the phone today with, from family members, and I've offered to talk to both moms and dads together because they're in different places on this journey. But I asked that everybody looks at the scientific literature, not the stuff that's on Facebook, not the stuff that you heard Aunt Susie say at the hairdressing parlor, but that people sincerely look at the scientific data that is available that can help us to make the best decision for our children and for our community.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to say, in regards to the death rate, I looked into that as well. And of course, it's, you know, concerned. We're parents here, most of us here this evening, and grandparents, caregivers of children. And the one thing that I found, you know, as far as the CDC with listing the deaths in children, is they have it listed as where if there was a child in the hospital and they died of a car accident and they were killed on site, unfortunately, and they did a swab and they tested COVID for positive, that death was COVID. So again, just trying to be a parent, making the right decisions, there seem to be so many things skewed.
That is, that is how the data is going for the adults as well. So it's not death from COVID infection, it's death with COVID infections. To the same, I'll use a parallel analogy. When somebody gets a vaccination, if they have a side effect within 30 days, that is what we consider, to the question earlier, a potential timeframe for a side effect. Well, if that child gets a polio vaccine in my office and gets in a car accident on the way home, that doesn't mean that the polio vaccine caused the car accident. And so it does require a little bit of discerning to see, as you nicely did, looking at the data, is the vaccine causing a side effect that caused trouble? Or was there something else that was related that confounded? It just happened the vaccine was given at the same time. You're absolutely correct that the data is reported as people with a positive test are reported as a death, even if their death wasn't caused by COVID. But I think here nor there, any child that dies is tragic. Any of the parents and grandparents who have passed away is tragic. And thanks to the science that has been moving with great speed and with great brains involved, we are at a place in this pandemic where we can really lessen the risks of people getting significantly sick or having long-haul syndrome or any other complications from a COVID infection.
Thank you.
Do we have any more questions? No? Okay.
I have a list of about literally 70 questions that I'm going to submit to the school. I'm not going to ask them.
Okay.
I'll submit them to you all, because I find that the way that this data is being described and discussed to be completely unacceptable. If you, I reference the Pfizer emergency use authorization application that was discussed with the FDA and the CDC, and their own report admits that they did not collect enough data to power any outcome or any known or possibly known side effect. It is, it is unacceptable. If I turned in work like that as a student, I would be failed. If I turned it to my job, I literally would be fired. I cannot understand why we cannot go to the raw materials that are being presented to us, look at them, see that they are inadequate to describe the impact they claim to be making, and then be called a crazy person. I just want to say, I am absolutely shocked at what is happening right now. I, I would, I would just, to sum one question, a simple statistic which should be calculable from data collected in any experiment should be the number needed to treat in order to reduce any outcome that you're measuring for. I challenge anyone to find that number. If you would like to calculate your own risk profile, find the number needed to treat and find the absolute risk reduction for this vaccine for children five to 11. Take the immunobridge data with you. Find out. Find out for yourself what the actual risk profile is. I will be submitting these questions to you all. I am very curious to hear what the answers are. I have as much time as you need.
Okay, thank you.
So much for your time.
This was an informative, to kind of give parents a gauge. We heard from other parents that, like yourself, also said, do your own research. I think we need to reiterate what happened at the policy committee meeting. We do not set the guise to vaccinate our children. This board does not do that. This committee does not do that. So your questions are valid, but they should be directed to the decision-makers at the state level that do make these decisions.
Totally.
And tonight was to inform parents that this is what you can do, this is where you can go. You also said where you can go. But that's all this was. It wasn't to set in stone how we're going to operate and how we're going, we're not mandating anything.
I agree. I'm not claiming you.
All right, just, let's, let's paint the room. She was here to inform people.
I am the only person in this entire room who is taking notes through this entire session. You have everything that happened?
First off, it's recorded. Secondly, I'm making notes as she spoke, absolutely. I've written down every person that spoke tonight. Please, please.
If there's no more questions?
Can I just say, Dr. Lang, thank you again for your time, your conscientious work. The Rhode Island Medical Society is honored, I'm sure, to have you at the helm, at leadership. We respect and appreciate your time. We're so grateful. And thank you from this committee and our community.
Thank you for the time, and I appreciate speaking with all the parents. Your questions are insightful and thoughtful, and I appreciate the time and meeting all of you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Just to kind of round out that whole discussion and kind of bridging off of what Travis said here is, I mean, aside from Rita, the rest of us are not medical professionals. And that is why we have these discussions, that we can get the verified information from the scientists, from the doctors, and then we can make these informed decisions. And I hope that we can continue to have discussions like this that are productive and civil going forward. Thank you, chair.
Next up is 3.1, update on the academic and co-curricular program at the Willburn Man School. He's next. I was just asking for the power boy. Right here.
Someone's prepared. Thank you, Mariah.
I think we're going to skip to slides five and six.
Okay.
And then we'll do a nice deep dive in December. That's it. Previous one. Thank you so much. Shania is going to give us a note about co-curriculars, and I'm just going to give a sneak peek at our December deep dive into RICAS 2021 data. At this time, I think everyone knows that Little Compton made it into the top 10 for ELA as well as the top 10 for math out of 56 LEAs school districts, if you will. Little Compton has one school, but it's really two schools. It's an elementary and a middle school. And when you have one school in a district like that, you look at your district data. You don't break it down, the state doesn't break it down by elementary grades and middle school grades and lump it all together. And we'll break it down by grades in December. So we're pretty proud of where our students landed in terms of proficiency rates. Naturally, we want 100% across the board, but this is a new state assessment. And it seems like, you know, we've had three benchmarking years, including 2021. And I think we're situated in a great spot. I want to read a piece of press that the commissioner sent out in her press packet about Little Compton. She wrote, "A commitment to in-person instruction for all students and families and a growth mindset across school and community cultures helped Little Compton's success. Dedicated teaching staff members who are willing to adapt to new circumstances, coupled with strong student attendance throughout the school year and social-emotional outlets for students to discuss how they were feeling during the pandemic, made a difference. Wilbur and McMahon School, a 14.49% increase in English language proficiency." Right. So this, our teaching staff and our students deserve kudos big time. And we'll do a deeper dive next month. Next slide, Jonathan. Thank you so much. And if we look at change from the previous RICAS administration, which was in 2019, 2020 was skipped because it was the beginning of the pandemic. Little Compton was number one in the state in terms of its leap in its proficiency rate and number three in math in the entire state. We slipped a little bit there, but that minute slip We slipped a little bit there, but that minute slippage still brought us into the third spot in terms of holding our own in math achievement. So we'll do a deeper dive, this is a long night, so we'll wait till December for a deeper dive and what we have in place to continue this momentum. But I'm sure I speak for the entire committee and community when I say there's a lot to be proud of in Little Compton. We're moving forward beautifully, we are a school on the move. Thank you for your support. That said, we actually have some great goals tonight regarding some of our co-curricular offerings. Aside from math and ELA achievement, we have all sorts of ways to reach our learners, including chorus and band, et cetera, and Principal Whip, take it away.
All right, I could not be more proud of how hard the students and staff worked to get us where we were in our, our rankings at the state level. I mean, that's one measure of, of how we're doing, but each and every day, everybody is working incredibly hard to keep us where we are, and the good work continues. The last year and a half has definitely taken a toll on having some more normal activities. So I want to let you know that the performing arts are back. Can you go to the next slide? So bands at Wilbur McMahon School, so Mr. Kirby is our band instructor, and he put some information together for me, so go ahead. So band is being offered to students in grades four to eight. It's been 19 months, so we're beginning to, to teach them, you know, focusing on notes and rhythms and tone production. That is a video, could you play that, Mariah? So the, the, these are special masks that their mouthpieces go into the mask.
Sound you?
There is sound.
Here is sound. IT, Human Resources, and the superintendent's offices, we're so lucky. We are right next to chorus and band, and we hear it all day long. Thank you, Jonathan.
There we go.
Carol, can I get some?
Honestly, I can try to, Mariah, one sec.
So we did purchase, there, there are specially designed masks. This is a playing musical instrument, so we did purchase those. There are covers to the bottoms of the instruments so that we don't aerosolize particles. When the weather has allowed, they've been taking the stools outside and been rehearsing outside. It's really fascinating to see, you know, Mr. Kirby put his little stools out outside. We have not decided on concert dates yet, but we do plan to have concerts. We need to figure out indoors, outdoors, and what the safest way to hold them will be, but do you have sound?
Maybe, we'll see.
And that was a collection of my seventh grade friends. Can you go to the next slide? We also have some arts enrichment blocks where Mr. Kirby, Ms. Oriole, and Mr. Delio are working with kids to allow them to have some of the experiences that we brought in last year. So one of the things we did last year was some, some drum bucket drumming. So this is an enrichment opportunity, this is some seventh graders, and they actually wrote this little piece. So very proud of our business. And John just wants to hear more.
By itself, I swear.
And-
We'll get you to-
This is also back. So Ms. Oriole has been, is, we're doing fourth, fourth through eighth grade. Is, is, for us also, once again, they're working on breathing and singing techniques, and we can hear, and you can see we have our little squares in the room to keep people socially distanced apart from each other. So that's our, our chorus students, there you go again. And then we have our general music classes, which both Ms. Oriole and Mr. Kirby are teaching. I'm not necessarily going to read you all this, but this is just a snippet of the information that went out in the past week. What we're doing is sending home a monthly grade level summary to parents so they know what's going on in the co-curricular subjects. So this is the information that went home in the past week. So this is what's going on in fifth, fourth, third, and second grade, if you can go on to the next one. And then this explains what's going on in first and kindergarten. And then this is the last snippet, and it is our third grade.
You didn't do it that time.
There we go. So cool, so we've got a lot of great things, one more slide.
Like the use of technology.
Like the use of technology in music, isn't it lovely? Theater is coming back to Wilbur McMahon also, and if you go to the next one, we will be staging Matilda Jr. this spring. We're working out the details of doing as much practicing in open settings as possible, looking at an outdoor performance. And the auditions will be in the next week or so, so a lot of exciting things going on. Really great to be able to see how it developmentally goes from the K to eight spectrum.
Thank you.
You're back. Hannah, that was on saying, that's for sure.
I just wanted to say that as a former band and chorus member here at Wilbur, I'm really excited that they're having these opportunities again, and it's really cool to see how innovative people have become and make it like with the masks and everything, just making it safe and enabling them to explore these co-curriculars and extracurriculars is really exciting, and I thank you for this.
I, I see Mrs. Harlow sitting in the audience, but I watch her children every morning, and oh my God, they couldn't be more excited to bring their instruments in. Have a lot of exciting, excited fourth graders.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a great thing to have those instruments back in hands.
Definitely, I was there at a dismissal with after-school club when they all raced out with saxophones and trumpets, and it was awesome. I'm, I'm really happy it's back.
Yeah, hallelujah.
Yes.
That was a sound that was missed, that's for sure. So we focus on academics, of course, core academics, but there's also so much more going on, and we just wanted to give you some highlights tonight. Thank you.
I can just ask a question.
Yeah.
The, the notices that you send, get sent home to these teachers, are they being uploaded to the website for, at a dedicated location where parents can actually refer to them, to, to see them, so that everything is? I'll use second grade, so if anything goes on in second grade, is everything there for second grade, so that?
That they would be able to go through their parent square feed, that's why I'm asking teachers to share that. So if they, if you, if a parent went back and-
But they would have-
Through their feed.
Yeah, so they'd have to scroll through everything to, to find that, all right, at that point.
I'm pretty sure they could filter it by, by class.
You can look at individual classes, just update some classroom teachers, but each, each person's feed is customized, so they only see the posts from teachers that are, that their child is a class member of that teacher. I guess that would be a request I'd put in afterwards, that, to say that we have a spot that people can, I should say, people, parents should be able to refer to if they, if it's a first grade, second grade, and, and then so on. All that data is, is right there, because, I don't know. And I understand what you're saying, that there's a feed, but sometimes things get lost in, in, in that. I think I'd like to look at that, if possible, just so it's, it's a lot easier to, to be able to reference back to, you know, my, my students in second grade, let's look back at second grade, and I can find everything right there versus scrolling.
Hi. Next, we're gonna get, have Rick from Studio Jade update us on our Stage Two Wilbur McMahon School Education Facility Master Plan.
Are you plugged in, do you want to try yours, or? No, you do, okay. Get that ready here.
Thank you, if I may, Chair, thank you so much, Rick, for waiting.
Just want to go with.
So, thank you, everyone, so we, we just want to bring the school committee up to the speed of what we're doing for Ride Stage Two. So for the agenda, we have the, again, updated on the Ride Stage Two. We have community engagement activities that we participated in. We're here to propose some scopes of work, and also in front of you, there's a prioritization activity that we would like everybody to rank, and so that we can go back, basically start evaluating what people's feelings are, at least this, what this committee's feelings are. So, right, where we've gone through the, established that you have a 35% reimbursement, there are some incentives, warm, safe, and dry, 5%, there's different incentives depending on what scope of work we decide to go with. The stage one of that is the needs, the needs that has been submitted and approved. Stage two is the solution for those needs, and we're all working towards a submission on February 15th for the Ride Stage Two, to, to go in for approval. The tasks that have been completed so far, we've done a facility assessment, taken a look at the building and the grounds as a whole, had some interviews with the administration, workshops, we've done a lot of data gathering, and again, we've had community engagement activities. And this is a schedule that basically hit our, our February 15th date, what activities and meetings we need to basically get there. So today's presentation is basically to show you some suggestions for recommendations of different scopes of work, actually 14 different scopes. And just solicit input. Next Thursday, Phil Conti will be doing similar presentation, the same presentation to the, the town council. So again, the right submissions are stage one, which have been approved. Stage two is what we're, we're all doing right now, they want to see this type of data. They want to see that we've had community engagement, they, they want documentation that there's been input from not just the architects and, and, and the people like yourselves, but also the community, and make sure that everybody's on board with the dollars that going to spend, the community dollars that people are going to spend on the project. So we're, we're all working towards this February 15th date. So like I said, we did a facilities assessment, and so this is purely the building and the grounds, okay? It's not the fun stuff, which are part of what we have here. So this is a 10-year needs, 10-year needs, basically all these, all these different values as far as the enclosure, the building of, I should say, plumbing, the interior finishes, HVAC, and electrical, is roughly, is $2.3 million. And again, this is 10-year needs. Capital improvements, if we, is it air-conditioned the, the entire building? With, with, that will be needed within the, the total 10 years, and then ceiling replacements, and then some roadwork. This is another 3.7 million. Again, we're just talking about the building itself. So now we tried to do responsible innovation, and what does that mean? Basically, we're, we're saying there's, there's a scope of work, there's project scope, there's a size of that project, and there is a program elements for that project, the needs. That has to be balanced with the, the funding limits, the debt ceilings that are occurring, logistic constraints, and then all the needs that the town may have to finance. Again, we talked about community engagement, and there's a presentation that basically, what, what we did for that engagement, we showed photos of different images that people basically commented on what they liked, if they didn't like. We showed an aerial view of the, the property, things that were, were, were needed, basically maybe a longer queuing section out in front for buses and for parents. It was also, went through all the plans, and basically said what, what some of the needs are for those plans, so we did all that, that's in another presentation that we can share. So, the heart of the presentation, so given all the information that we got, given the, the community engagement, given the facilities assessment, given everything, we came up basically with 14 mini projects that have a dollar value associated with them, which you probably have. But we, we wanted people to rank what they felt was most important, least important, things that would, you know, happen, say, in the next five to seven years, as opposed to further out. Knowing that there is, there's going to be a lot of deferred maintenance that's going to need to go out even further than the five to seven years, into the 10-year range. So the, the first item here is really a connector road in front of the, the original building. Is there a way that we can queue up, stack up more vehicles, something, some stuff on the ground plane that maybe doesn't look like asphalt, whether or not it's some sort of pavers and stuff, you know, what does the landscaping look like, but there's- But there seem to be a need for, um, safer vehicle access and stacking. Um, number two is the outdoor learning area. Uh, this is, um, the, um, the exterior, uh, courtyard, that's a butt stick cafeteria. Uh, that is not accessible. Um, and is, doesn't have enough access out of that. So do we turn that into more of an exterior learning, um, environment? Uh, make sure, again, all the ADA and, and, and egress are, uh, emergency egress are sufficient. Reimagining this space here. Um, you, you know, are there things that obviously there are things we, we can do to this space to make it more, um, more functional, multifunctional for age groups, for, for grades, uh, new furniture, uh, new finishes, for, uh, small groups, large groups. So really rethinking how these type of library multimedia spaces are really being used these days. Bring it into, um, twenty-first century learning. Number four is new, some new kitchen equipment, not all new kitchen, but some new, like providing a, a new stove, new dishwasher. Um, given that there's, uh, emergency shelter, um, needs here that, uh, that some of these, uh, pieces of equipment should be part of this, uh, the scope of work. Um, adding some air conditioning, not throughout the whole building, but really the old space, uh, old classroom spaces where, um, uh, where there's a high humidity levels, um, and really air conditioning that space. In addition to that, you know, the acoustical ceiling, and acoustical ceilings, some of the older classrooms. Uh, and then number seven, um, selective paving and stormwater, uh, management on the exterior of the building. Stage, so the stage curtain rigging, uh, audio visual, um, in need and we, we heard, uh, that, uh, uh, some of those needs were, were planned, but now that with the reimbursements, you basically can get, uh, thirty-five cent, thirty-five cents back on every dollar that you spend. So, um, that was part of the number eight number plan. Um, the gym floor, new gym floor. Again, getting that reimbursement money back instead of doing it, doing it in this type of process or in the stage two process. The number ten is doing some interior and exterior, uh, finishes and components. Uh, maybe selective windows that need to be walls, uh, the painting floors, uh, but so the dollar value kind of set for that amount of work, certain amount of work. Heard that the art room was very large, uh, for needs and whether or not that could be divided up to an additional classroom. So that was, uh, again, one of the things that we've heard. So it's, it's on our list as number eleven. Uh, number twelve is there are some exterior doors that, uh, should be replaced. Um, electrical outlets, more electrical outlets in the classrooms to really support the technology these days. Uh, and then selective deferred maintenance, things that really can't wait, uh, for the ten-year timeframe, really things that should be done like right now, whether it's pumps or whatever. But then you, the, the, the staff has done a great job maintaining their buildings, but I think there's going to be some things that are going to need to be done. And then is anything else that you may want to bring up? So we handed around this, this little sheet, uh, if, uh, if you like to do it now or if you just want to get that disinformation back to us. Um, but it would be helpful for us when the next steps of, of, uh, where we want to take all this information and how we're going to prioritize that, you know, for, or, uh, the, the values that we have, dollar amount that we have. And you have the cheat sheet of what, uh, the, the values that we've put towards these. So you may say, well, you know, do we really need, you got the next? Do you really need, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to do up the space? Um, might be a good question, but this is the, the way you could think about furniture, when you think about the finishes, when you think about some of the images that we showed, uh, during the, um, during the community engagement. You know, we, we don't want to underestimate and just say that it's a, a small value because it's not. It's, it's, there's, there's a lot of technology that goes into some of these spaces. So again, we can go through each value, uh, at some point. But these are the numbers that we, that we would basically recommend. If you're going to do this type of project, you should be thinking about this type of dollar value and not undercut.
May I, just a quick question on the deferred, um, maintenance? I heard you say this should already have been done, these, these projects in that category?
Uh, I'm sure.
I'm sorry, the deferred, the select deferred maintenance, that's, that's a project that really should.
Those are things that, that are probably going to come up and then during their future that should be taken care of now.
Right.
Instead of listed out, uh, a, a while. So, um,
Okay.
So again, this is, we would say that this is like, say, a five-year plan, five to seven-year plan.
Right.
So some of those deferred maintenance things, you know, like a new roof and stuff, you know, I'm not sure exactly what your, your lifespan of your roof is, but some roof work, uh, um, mechanical equipment, pumps, things like that, that are going to go up further probably. But there are going to be things that I'm going to call up now that you should basically plan for. We should put a value on that and not say that everything is, everything that's on that deferred maintenance list is going to be pushed out. This should be a value put now that's going to cover that.
Right, yeah. We have been caught up on things like boilers. So that's a good, that's a good point. Okay, thank you.
You got all right that on fourteen.
No.
And I. You for filling in for Phil. I know he had a last minute emergency. Thank you so much, Rick.
Yeah, Rick, thank you very much for coming. So again, we, we, next step says really for us to come back to the, uh, student council with the same type of presentation and get everybody on board. So it's, it's like Phil told you, it's important to get the whole community behind, um, this effort.
Thank you very much.
Awesome.
Um, go through the lead if you'd like.
Okay.
I will not find it rude.
Very informative. I, I appreciate the, uh, the information.
Four point two, human resource, that's eight. Oh, thank you, Chair. This week we welcomed long-term substitute Campbell, who will be working in grade five as the E S A social studies teacher. We also have several active postings. We are looking for a basketball coach, actually several basketball coaches, an I B coordinator and a math curriculum coordinator. Posted internally only, it is the grade eight advisor stipend position. If anyone is interested in learning more about any of these positions or in substituting as a teacher, assistant, nurse, librarian, uh, feel free to contact me, um, via email, school spring, or simply call the main office and they'll. Thank you.
I have one question.
From?
The long-term substitutes, that until the end of the year?
We hope, no.
Five point one, Mr. McNamee.
Okay, I'll make this brief. At this point in time, we're just about two months into the school year, so what I try to do is identify potential issues on any of the budgeted items. Right now, I'm not seeing a lot. Um, you know, the substitute, uh, line item is one that can have an impact on our overall budget. If I look at that for the two-month period, uh, we're, um, we're at about, um, twenty-four and a half percent, which should be probably closer to twenty percent. So at that run rate, we might be over budget by, by thirty thousand, but certainly it's a little early in the year to, to look at that. But we'll, we'll continue to monitor that expenditure. Um, some of the larger items like our, uh, district tuition, um, we're going to be, uh, right on budget with Portland High School because we have a contract that guarantees them hundred students. Uh, so we've got that fully budgeted with the additional costs for the, uh, after-school library. So we're in pretty good shape here. Um, I think we're, we'll be okay on our, uh, CTE programs at this point. Um, uh, any other district special education, uh, will fluctuate, but at this point I think we're going to be okay in that area too. So, you know, the other area might be, uh, purchase property services. We've had some, some sizable expenses on repairs to the fire alarm system. So, uh, we'll continue to watch that. I did up that budget last year, so hopefully we've got enough to near the cover. But this point, I'm not looking at, uh, any, uh, major items that we might be skew of at this point.
Great, thank you. So, any questions? Great, um, for policy subcommittee, um, I'll wait till we get the, um, action items. I will mention that, um, even though we had the COVID nineteen vaccination policy on our last meeting, the first read, and Hannah and I did meet, um, to discuss it, we feel like we have, we got a lot of input from public and that we, um, just for a time sake, because I think that meeting was like two and a half hours, that we, we needed to digest it and revisit it to, um, give it an honest try. Um, Portsmouth School Committee liaison?
Thank you. Um, just a couple of things. Uh, the Portsmouth School Department Equity Institute Analysis is ongoing. They're at the survey portion of this analysis. So, um, students and families, grades three through twelve, so our Little Compton High Schoolers, uh, may be receiving surveys. It is totally, uh, volunteer basis, so parents can opt their students out of these surveys. But those are, if you haven't gotten them already, they will be coming. Um, homecoming happened outside on the football field, um, on October twenty-ninth. There was definitely a lot less students in attendance than in normal years, but, um, they were happy that they were able to celebrate homecoming, um, this year for sure. Um, and on November second, there was a special election for, um, a couple of bond referendums. And the one, question one relating to school facilities, which I had, um, discussed our last meeting, did pass. So next steps for that is they're waiting on the decision from RIDE and they expect that to come next month. So we should be hearing more about whether or not, um, there will be facility updates in Portsmouth, um, specifically at the high school, which will affect our Little Compton students. And then, of course, I just want to mention again the, um, passing of Mr. Shears and hope you all join me in offering condolences to his family, friends and colleagues on the, uh, Portsmouth School Committee. Um, it's very sudden and tragic. Um, but lastly, there, I, uh, I believe Principal Whip has already shared this information with our eighth grade parents. But just again, there will be a, um, open house for Portsmouth High School CTE programming on Thursday, November eighteenth from six to seven thirty. So if any of the eighth graders and their parents are curious about the very robust CTE programming at Portsmouth High School, definitely check that open house out. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Excellent.
Um, Recreation Committee liaison?
Yes, we did meet on November first and we discussed the sprinkler system, the shed. These important aspects of our recreation. Um, we, we talked about repairs to the tennis courts, the basketball courts, still exploring lighting on the tennis courts. Very exciting. And we discussed scheduling of the school gym that will be managed by Patrick McHugh and Mr. Mack. So if anybody has questions about that.
Wow. Um, or on this, may?
Yes, back to me. Uh, the October nineteenth breakfast for school leaders was so wonderful. I was amazed at the number of resources. Uh, so I have some and I'd like to share them with Nurse Dunn, although she probably has copies of all of this. But it was just amazing to me what Rhode Island offers in terms of, of the wellness and nutrition. Uh, fabulous resources and, um, I think it's online if anybody wanted, it missed it. You were on, you caught it on Zoom.
I tried to, um, find the video of it and I could not because the speaker was wonderful.
The speaker is wonderful. So maybe if, uh, we'll see if it, for others on the committee who might want to catch some of it because really wonderful speakers. Uh, so that was the breakfast and the dates for the upcoming wellness committee meetings have been set for twenty twenty-two. They were sent to the committee. And I won't reset them here, but again, we encourage any and all parents and community members to attend our, our, a wellness meeting. We talk about such important things as nutrition, uh, fitness and overall health of our students. So, um, that's that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next up is public, um, public input. Anyone is welcome to speak now or raise your hand during an agenda item that you wish to speak on. That's fine as well. Yes, Mr. Nicole.
I just have a, a short statement that I actually prepared and I didn't know that the.
Got your entire statement right there?
No, 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 no.
Okay, alright.
And, and I'll get to this in a second.
Okay.
Um, Matt Nicole, forty B Old Main Road. Um, so this is, this is a list of questions that I need to understand in order to make an informed decision on what's going on. I'm not trying to claim that you all are controlling anything about anyone's life. I feel as though information is not being shared with people in the community. So I'm just going to read this and then, um, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Um, I want the best for myself and my family. There's a real risk out there. Uh, sorry, if there's a real risk out there or if there's a real benefit to mitigating that risk, I'm all ears. In my best case scenario, I'm wrong. And the simple act of giving a couple of shots to my kid will protect them from a threat for which there is no cure. I am here out of genuine desire to understand the messy world that's going on us around us at the moment. The information I've been gathering and my questions are one hundred percent about the risks and benefits to our children. Full stop. I will not address herd immunity, stopping the spread or any other public health measure. I would be thrilled if we had a forum about the, the principles of public health, but that is not what I am concerned with at the moment. To be clear, I am specifically concerned with the health, safety and ability and to thrive of my child. If there's a fact in this list here, uh, it is the actual information presented by the people making claims that I am being asked to believe. There's a link to the original source material here. If my fact is incorrect or if the fact is correct and there's a reason to believe that the fact mentioned is in the concern, I am thrilled to hear it. If there's any impression that I'm giving a partial view of the facts or skewing it, then please correct me. I have left space after every single question here where I will be taking copious notes to continue trying to understand. I believe there would be a, a Q and A. But I, I invite everyone to, to try to answer these questions. If there is no answer, it's because I expect whoever is making the case to have an answer as the answer to that question is critical to my or anyone's ability to understand and make an informed decision. Or it's an opinion question, which I'm genuinely curious about to hear the answer. If I don't get answers to these questions now, my work to answer them will continue. I am not a doctor, lawyer, educator, statistician, philosopher, priest, elected official or anything else. And I hope that we can all come to this conversation with the humility to understand that literally no one anywhere else is all of those things either. We must work together to give our kids the best possible lives. That's why I am here. I am here because I care. I am not here because I hate you or disagree. I hope I can be granted the same courtesy that I've been attempting to display. Each section of the questions that I've created ends with my attempt to summarize what I understand to be the case based on the facts presented in plain English. My assertions are sourced by generally agreed upon facts like the U S Census or assertions made by others. For example, Pfizer's emergency use authorization application. The things I don't know are on display. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. I will be submitting these questions to the school board and I look forward to hearing everyone's thoughts. I covered the topics of risk calculation, benefit calculation, quality of the data collected, emerging information about the vaccines in the wild, limitations of the experiments as they have been designed, the roles doctors say they should play in our lives, and finally, potential conflicts of interest. Thank you for your time. I'll leave this here and I'll send an email to the board or to you all.
I don't see any other hands. Next, action items. Consider, discuss and vote to amend the student dress code policy. Second read. So we had our first read last month. We had simply added the masking. We updated the masking part of the the policy to reflect that we are now in school and not distance learning and what, what the consequences would be from there. Does anyone have any questions? I would consider a motion to accept this policy.
Do you have a motion? Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 8.2, consider, discuss and vote to amend the school committee bylaws. Second read, there's a lot of grammatical stuff going on and we also made some adjustments to define subcommittees better. That, there's been a lot of questions about that. It also came up with Zoom meetings and the Wellness Committee and all that. We were, we were, we had a lot of questions about our subcommittees, so we got that clarified and the policy updated. Does anyone have any questions? I consider a motion to accept the school committee bylaw.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider, discuss and vote to amend the wellness policy. So this is just the first read. We went through on the Wellness Committee Chair's request and defining the makeup of the committee better. As according to the Rhode Island general law, there is a makeup of the Wellness Committee and so we added that in there so that could be a little more clear as far as members of the committee.
I am very happy with this.
Oh, good.
I just want this one little edit. It'll change, the date will change and that's it.
Okay.
Very nice. Thank you.
You're welcome.
New policy.
Does anyone have any questions on that? Excellent. 8.4, consider, discuss and vote to approve the 2022 Little Compton School Committee meeting schedule. Every year we're supposed to post on the Secretary of State's or meeting schedule. Doesn't mean we can't change them or add other ones or whatever may be, but we need to have some sort of schedule on the books. So there it is. I would entertain a motion to approve the 2022 Little Compton School Committee schedule.
Wednesdays, correct?
Yes, second Wednesday. Yeah. I move to approve the 2022 Little Compton School Committee schedule of meetings. Second.
All in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? All right, great. Consider, discuss and vote to send a communication to Little Compton Town Council regarding the display of flags at the Wilbur and McMahon School. So the town council is currently entertaining a flag policy for the town and the town hall. And in it, they have included the flagpole at Wilbur School. Per the general laws, Rhode Island general law, the school committee has care, control and custody of the school building and its grounds, which includes the flagpole. And the solicitor for the town council and our solicitor have discussed it and the suggestion came that a letter be sent that, from the, from the school committee supporting the, the general law that says that we have care and control and custody of the flagpole.
So essentially requesting they remove our flagpole from their policy.
Yes.
And follow the law.
And follow the law. Yeah, exactly. Any questions?
I have a question on this.
Okay.
So at that hearing, the attorney went in and asked that Wilbur School be removed from the policy prior to this meeting.
Yes.
And I'm trying to understand this where we haven't talked about this at all prior, at a full, full committee meeting. So why, why was the attorney up there requesting for something that we have not talked about?
He was there speaking on my behalf, for my request and only spoke and was clear that he was spoke, speaking because I requested him and that the rest of the committee had not voted on it yet.
Interpreted that the school requested that that be removed from the policy.
He was very clear that he was speaking upon my request and not the school committee and that we would be coming to the school committee at the next meeting to have a vote of the whole committee.
So I guess it kind of goes back to then I, then I asked the second question on that is because as you stated before, I guess further down in our agendas where we can ask for administrative help in, in council. So at that point, if he was there doing it, what you asked for, that wasn't a consensus though, right? For, we didn't all ask for, to pay an attorney to go ask for something to be removed from a policy without speaking about it here at the committee in full.
Correct.
I would say though that this could be a little different since the town council is violating Rhode Island general law that
I'm not, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about procedure right now that so we, we can't, we can't make decisions on our own. We can't represent the whole committee individually.
I was very clear that I was, I was speaking as myself and that I had not come to you all. I had gone
That was the second question though.
I so I had gone on my own to make sure that the town council was aware of the general law. And they did not seem to understand it as I was reading it to them. So before they made a policy that violated the state law, the attorneys spoke to each other and there wasn't enough time to come and have a vote here. So the attorney came to read the law to them again and express, excuse me, expresses concerns and let them know that they were, we're going to be voting on sending a letter from the committee.
If I might, from the the newly approved bylaws under the Section 1 chair with the assistance as necessary from the superintendent, the chair will represent the committee in all its relationships with the Little Compton Town Government. So
That was just voted on though already.
No, we approved those a couple of months ago.
And that hadn't been changed.
This has been in here. So, so I think you, Polly as chair represented us and quite, yeah, with the authority of the bylaws. So yeah, that's good.
There are some actions that need to take place between meetings and I am always in contact with the attorney, superintendent, to make sure I am not overstepping, make sure I'm including the entire committee as much as possible. And that's what happened.
I just got to say is that it came, again, not to appear myself, but it came across that you were representing the whole school committee when you have the school attorney up there.
Well, then you didn't listen to the words that were coming out of our mouth because both of us said that we were not representing the entire school committee, that we were both representing me.
But she does have, as the chair, she does have the right, Mike, to represent us in relationship with the town government. And so she does have the right to do that.
So is there a conflict on that when we can't individually represent the school committee?
You're not the chair. We're not the, we're, the chair has the right.
I'm asking, I'm asking a question. I'm not trying to be smart. I'm asking a serious question. Because we individually cannot represent the school committee, that has to be done as a whole, right?
Not when it comes to the relationship with the Little Compton Town Government.
I also, Mike, I watched the recording and the live stream of those meetings and Polly and John Anderson both specifically stated that they were represented, they're not representing the views of the full committee. It was explicit.
Yeah. And I understand that there are different ways to interpret things. But, but I, I think in all good conscience, it sounds like to Polly as chair did a decent job.
So then I kind of go back that as saying that we used our school attorney as a personal attorney to go represent chair.
To stop the town council from making a decision that would have led to a litigious act between two parties in the, in the town. I mean,
The attorney is always looking out for the district's best interests.
Yes.
He was representing me as the chair of the school committee. He wasn't representing me as Polly Allen citizen. I, I speak to John Anderson a lot during the month. And all those conversations do not go by the entire committee. It's part of my responsibility as the chair.
So I guess, I guess, and again, I'm not trying to respond to this, but the thing is that John's there representing the chair and the chair's, according to what Rita's referencing, is representing the committee. The committee had no communications, no discussions on what you were going up to the town council on.
That's what we're doing today. I, both John and I, in consideration of the entire committee, asked them to consider waiting to hear from the entire committee at tonight's vote.
And this is also kind of a special circumstance in that the town council is about to violate state law. That's, I mean, it's not like we're asked, it's not like Polly had some idea or of her own that she wanted John Anderson to represent to the town council. It's, they are about to violate the law if this passes with our flagpole on it. So.
People helping people.
Does anyone have any questions, concerns, ideas that they would about John Anderson sending a letter to the town council regarding the law?
I would just ask that a copy also be sent to us individually.
Definitely. Yeah.
And but other than that, I do not have any questions or requests.
What, what would that let us, like, what's, what's there? I'm just sorry. What is just unclear? What are they, what's he going to send to the council?
He's, he's basically going to send the law and what it says and pretty much a recap of what he said at the meeting that the school committee has the control, care and custody of the school and the grounds. And we make policy that affects those the school inside and out.
That's fine.
So I'd consider a motion to send communication to Little Compton Town Council regarding the display of flags at the Wilbur and McMahon School.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries four to one. Consider, discuss and vote to approve any requests for information from administration and or legal counsel.
I don't have, I'm just, this is just an idea now popping up into my head. We did just already approve the schedule of meetings, but I just wanted to throw the idea out there that maybe if there are members concerned that we're not meeting frequently enough to deal with these issues, maybe we start meeting twice monthly like Portsmouth School Committee does. Just something to think about for the future.
Do you want us to all just think about it or do you want it on the next agenda to discuss?
Let's discuss on the next agenda.
Okay.
Think about it and then we'll discuss.
Okay. I'm hoping Mariah is writing that down too. Okay. I write it here and then Lord knows where it is next time. Okay, consider and vote to enter into executive session under.
I'm sorry, can I just ask? There's just two things and this can be for the next agenda if need be. If we can look into having more details on the minutes of our meetings. And the second thing would be, I'd like to, a little bit more information as far as the surveys that I know and the platforms that we use. The concern on that is that are these surveys actually anonymous? Where you have to, and I guess that's why it's going to be another discussion. Meaning that I'll use Google as an example. So if you have a Google survey that gets sent out, you have to sign into Google to actually, to be able to perform that survey.
Okay.
There's an email that's attached to that and there may be some resistance to that as far as people feel that that it's not really anonymous. Because you actually have to sign into an account to actually be able to perform that survey.
Okay.
That's why I just asked for more detail and if we have to bring that up. And I know Jonathan may have to chime in on that or what have you, or Sonya.
And then you want more information on the platforms that we're using?
Is that, just, I guess we use, I know we use Google for our
Google classroom?
Yeah, for surveys and I know that we personally put out surveys through Passware. So are those really anonymous for people or are they not? Because I know the challenge that you've had is that it's trying to get people to actually participate in surveys and that they do enough because of hesitation, because it's anonymous. So.
So do you want information on the actual platforms or whether the platforms are anonymous?
Are they, yes. Are they really?
Jonathan, are we playing favorites? Do we know these people?
We don't collect, it's not on the agenda, so we'll discuss it.
You understand my, my reason though is that people have to sign into their accounts to actually be able to do a, a survey, survey.
No emails.
Looks like Mr. Gabriel's going to have a special section of his.
Are you making a motion under the administrative?
I'm asking that to be on the next, yes, a motion. Well, I'm asking that to be included on the next agenda.
I think we do have to approve that though, since we're requesting information from admin.
Yep.
Let's just get confirmation. If, if more people will participate, if they know that it's a closed loop, then.
Because that's, you need a motion. That because Jonathan, there'll be time given by Jonathan to
Yeah, up to vote on that.
Okay. All right. So Mike, do you want to make the motion?
Okay.
So yeah, go slowly because Mariah is going to record it for, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion. How it says, make a motion to inquire the platforms that we use are actually anonymous. Or surveys being used within the school.
Got it? Okay. Number second.
I, I will like to say, what is, what is I, I, I will like to, what is, what is we talking in terms of time spent on this?
Depending on how detailed of an explanation you want, it's, I could write up something pretty, pretty, uh, quickly that just explains how and why that works. Um, or if you'd want more of the technical detail of, of what happens during that process and why a sign is, is required, we could, we could put something together that kind of demonstrate that too. Um, but I mean, ten minutes?
Okay, I, I will second Michael's motion.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or motion carries?
What about the second part, about the minutes? How do you do that? What would be the?
So, this, the minutes, I'm, I'm gonna talk to John Anderson about the minutes because I, I feel like with the recorded copy of the, um, meetings that, um, abbreviated minutes are suffice. I mean, you can get anything Mariah records short of the actual recording, um, is not gonna be complete. So, I, I, I think with the recording that we're, we're covering all our bases. But I will, I'll check in with that. And I'll get back to you. I'll, I'll have, um, either, I'll, I'll find an answer and I'll have either Carolyn or Mariah let the whole committee know. That way, we're all on the same page, okay? Okay, consider and vote to enter into executive session under RIGL section forty-two, forty-five, and RIGL section forty-two, forty-six, five, A, three. By way of roll call.
Polly Allen.
Oh. Aye.
Travis Hotty. Travis Hotty. Hannah Yeh.
Aye.
Rita Kenahan.
Aye.
May Gricher.
Aye.
Super, thank you, um. I was gonna explain it, am I already muted?
Oh, sorry, I can wait. Go ahead.
Oh, um, we're gonna go into executive session and we will be back if you, um, you stay in this after we're done with executive session. Thank you.
I'll leave this here.
Yeah.
Matt, leave it right here.
I'll email you guys.
Email these people.
Perfect.
I can't guarantee that I will have the medical knowledge to answer.